I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, November 6th, 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town's YouTube channel. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro temp Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, it is my pleasure to welcome my pastor, Pastor Ken Jumper, from the Harvest Church, if he would come forward and offer invocation for tonight's meeting. Pastor Ken, good to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. And Mayor Steve, may I say on behalf of the clergy and the churches and our parishioners here in the Town of Lexington, thank you for your service. And council, thank you for your service as well. Will you join us as we pray? Father God, we honor your name tonight. Lord, as we begin with prayer, thank you for the wonderful community in which we live. Thank you for your blessings and your grace over us. Thank you for the privileges and the freedoms we have in our country and our nation and right here locally as well. I pray, Lord, as we gather together, that you would continue to give us leaders, even as the election comes tomorrow, and with this council even, that you would give us men and women who fear God, love truth. Pray that you'd grant them wisdom and understanding and prudence as they lead us forward. We ask these things in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Bless you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Ken. At this time, I'd like to welcome Lexington County Veteran, Mr. E.C. Murray, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Murray, nope, he's not with us. I'm sorry, Mr. Murray couldn't make it. Come on forward. We enjoyed seeing you at the Veterans Parade on Sunday. We hope you enjoyed your parade and your day. Obviously, you're connected because it was a beautiful day.
Absolutely.
Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Want you to share a few words with us today?
Aye.
I am the co-founder of the Lexington County Veterans Group. We've been meeting since '07. We don't have an agenda. We don't have a rules. Everybody comes every week just because they want to be there. It's a great group. I myself am a longtime Lexington resident. I served with the 101st Airborne Division in Vietnam. I fought on Hamburger Hill, and I'm glad to be here, very proud. And it's an honor to be here considering as veterans today coming up on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for being part of our community. Appreciate you being here tonight. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Our first item tonight, like to report on our executive session this evening. Tonight's executive session, we had two routine personnel matters. We had a contractual matter. It was a contract related to a cable TV franchise government access channel. And we had three legal issues. One issue regarding utility condemnation case. One was issues regarding forever chemicals class action litigation. And the third was advice regarding agenda items. No vote was taken in executive session other than to move to adjourn executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So moved.
Ms. Manus makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corns seconds the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Was that Councilmember Smith?
That was Smith.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That was Councilmember Smith. The way Becky was looking at me and the way Gavin was laughing, I knew that I had made a mistake. I apologize.
All right.
Deletions on tonight's agenda. I believe we are removing one item from the agenda. It's old business.
Number two.
Number two, if we could remove that from the agenda. Anyone have anything else they'd like to remove from the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move right into approval of minutes. Copy of the minutes from the council meeting on June 12th, 2023, and the work session on July 24th, 2023 are provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections for regular council meeting June 12th and council work session July 24th?
Mayor, make a motion. We approve and submit it.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll sack it in.
Ms. Manus seconds the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those minutes are approved. At this time, we'll move into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation read by Councilmember Todd Corns. This is a proclamation on the Hindu Heritage Month. If you are related to this proclamation, please come forward and stand by the microphone as we present a proclamation to you. Good evening. Thank you all for being with us. No, right here is fine.
Yes, sir. I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'll come down and present it to you guys, and then you guys can give us a few words. So, here it is. A proclamation from the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington recognizing October as Hindu Heritage Month, whereas there are an estimated 1 billion Hindus worldwide and approximately 3.4 million Hindu Americans live across the United States, and whereas Hindu Americans in Lexington represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals from many different countries, and whereas the Town of Lexington and the nation have been influenced by the extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity of its residents, including those who identify as Hindu, and whereas the Town of Lexington and our nation have greatly benefited from the efforts of Hindu Americans, and whereas Hindu Americans promote the ideals of tolerance, pluralism, and religious freedom, which are inherent to their beliefs and respect the diversity of all faiths, and whereas many of the important Hindu festivals like Gandhi Jayanti, Navaratri, and Dushyara, was that pretty close? All right, are celebrated during October. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council for the Town of Lexington that October is hereby declared Hindu Heritage Month in the Town of Lexington, and that all residents are encouraged to show their appreciation and support of their Hindu neighbors in the Town of Lexington dated this 6th day of November, 2023. And I would just follow that up. Mr. Mayor was saying, I was riding by the Ford dealership the other day, and I saw some guys playing a magnificent game of cricket on the old baseball field, and after that in my neighborhood in Bar Lake. One or two nights ago, there were a lot of fireworks going off for Diwali, right? So it's celebration time. So let me come and present this to you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, you could go to the microphone and give us a little brief background. Talk to us a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor and rest of the council. We represent an organization called Hindu Swamsevak Sangh, which means the Voluntes from the Hindu Society. It was established here in the U.S. in 1989. We have presence in 34 states, and we have a little more than 230 chapters all over the U.S. Here we have one in Columbia and one in Greenville, and we have been doing various, what do you call, community services. Right now, we are doing something called Seva Diwali, which is a food drive related to Diwali festival, which is happening right now. That is one way to give back to the American society from our side. We do yoga-related events. In January, we do two weeks of sun salutations. So I think a couple of years back, we did 1 million Surya Namaskar, so sun salutations all over the U.S. We do appreciate the teachers here. I mean, we call it Guruyandana or the Teacher's Appreciation Day. We invite many of the American teachers, principals, and other educators to our temple. We respect them. We honor them. Last year, we had 39 teachers coming in. We have been doing this for past three, four years. What else? And I think thanks to the mayor, he had invited us for Raksha Bandhan, Universal Wellness Day, two years back to your home.
Yes.
So, thank you. And we are here to support and service the American society. If anybody has any questions, please reach out to us. Our website is hss-us.org.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all this recognition and support.
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all being with us.
Can I introduce my team?
Absolutely.
Okay, this is Mandal Kumar, and Jitesh, and Shiva Vishabrahmana, and Thiagarajan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all being with us. And his wife. Very good. Thank you. Our next presentation tonight is a proclamation being read by Councilmember Ron Williams. This is a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. If you are with the Granby chapter, y'all please come forward as we read this proclamation. Mr. Williams.
I believe Paul Coleman, and Lynn Parler, and Ms. Lynda Dean.
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
All right. A proclamation from the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, designating November as Native American Heritage Month, whereas the history and culture of our great nation have significantly influenced by Native American and Indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas Native American customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as the National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that November 2023 is hereby recognized as National Native American Heritage Month, and the Town of Lexington and citizens are urged to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities dated this 6th day of November, 2023. Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good. We're going to take a picture, and then we'll give you just a few minutes to talk to us about it a little bit. Come on.
Well, I had prepared something totally different. But first of all, I wanted to thank you all for having us here and also for this proclamation. And I wanted to know if anybody knows Peter Harris, because Peter Harris is a Native American who was born in 1753 in near Fort Mills, South Carolina, and he fought with Continental Army during the Revolutionary War. And I had prepared a little spill about that, but I'm not sure everybody wants to know. Okay, well, Peter Harris is a Kattapa Indian born in 1753 near Fort Mills, South Carolina. Harris served in the Continental Army during the American Revolution. As the Revolutionary War came to fruition, members of the Kattapa tribe allied themselves with a patriot cause and supported local South Carolina and Georgia militia. In June 1777, Harris enlisted as a private in the Battalion of Georgia Minutemen to fight for American independence. He was wounded during the Battle of Stone O'Ferry. After he recovered from his wounds, he returned to active military service and joined General Thomas Sumter's Militia Brigade in 1780. With this brigade, he fought at the Battles of Rocky Mount, Hanging Rock, and Blackstock Farm. In recognition of his military service, Peter Harris received a 200-acre bounty land grant on Fishing Creek in Chester County, South Carolina in 1794. In October 1822, he petitioned the state of South Carolina for a pension. He was one of the few Native Americans to be granted a $60 per year pension from the state's South Carolina Legislature in December 1822, just one year before he died. And we're a lineage group. We are, our ancestors fought in the Revolutionary War, and I was trying to make the connection between that, and there's a lot of Native Americans that are in the group, so.
Very good. Well, thank y'all for being with us.
Thank you.
Our next presentation tonight is a proclamation being read by Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is a proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month, and I understand Ms. Robertson is, did she make it? All right, come on forward, Ms. Robertson. Sorry for the, had some delay there, but you made it in time. Thank you. Mr. Lyle.
Thank you. Glad to have you. A proclamation from the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, declaring November as Family Court Awareness Month, whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, FCAMC, is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children, and whereas the mission at the FCAMC is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents, while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. Whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically-based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value, and whereas the mission at the FCAMC is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based peer-reviewed research. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of the children. This search includes the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, Co-Principal Investigators Vincent Felitti, Kaiser Permanente CDC, Child Custody Evaluators Beliefs and Domestic Abuse Allegations, Principal Investigator Daniel Saunders, University of Michigan, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice, and Child Custody Outcomes in Cases Involving Parental Aliination and Abuse Allegations, Principal Investigator Joan S. Meyer, George Washington University Law School, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that November is hereby declared Family Court Awareness Month in the Town of Lexington, and that all citizens are urged to support efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor and value the lives of children. Amen to that. Dated the 6th day of November, 2023. Signed, Steve McDougall, Mayor. You want to say a few things, or you want me?
Come on now. Come on, you can get in here.
This is near and dear to my heart. So thank you for demonstrating your support and recognizing the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. These efforts were organized by Tina Swithan of One Mom's Battle, and California Protective Parents Association, also joined by the National Family Violence Law Center, the Court Set USA, Peakey's Justice, Cadence Corner Foundation, Kira Franchetti Foundation. These are all parents who have lived this nightmare, myself included. Our goal with Family Awareness Month is to shine a spotlight on family court system lacking proper training. Family court professionals should receive training surrounding the topics they rule about every day, including domestic violence, child sexual abuse, physical abuse, emotional abuse, trauma, coercive control, as well as victim and perpetrator behaviors. Many families in our community are struggling in silence and facing the reality that child safety is not being prioritized, and that our bench officials need tools to help ensure children not living in the trapped, in trauma and abuse, and even worse, dying at the hands of a dangerous parent. We appreciate your support, and as I said, this is something near and dear to my heart as my children and I have lived this nightmare. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Glad to do it, Holly. Thank you for being with us. Our next presentation tonight is a proclamation being read by Municipal Attorney Brad Cunningham. This is a proclamation for World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Yes, he's here. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate you allowing me this opportunity, and if you're in the public, I want to make it clear, this is their proclamation. I'm just a mouthpiece. I'm here for a personal reason. This particular disease has had an effect on my life. A little over two years ago, I lost a colleague to it. More recently, this spring, I lost probably the kindest, gentlest soul, my uncle David, who, Ms. Livingston, he ran a nursery up in Asheville. But I found out he was sick with this disease, and I can tell you that it moves fast, because when I found out he was sick, I worked a couple more days, took a Friday off to go up and see him, and I got about three-fourths of the way there, and my cousin Anna called me and said that he had died already while I was on the way up to see him. So anyway, it's, I appreciate the chance to read it, and I will read that now. This is a proclamation from the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, designating November 16th, 2023 as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas in 2023, an estimated 64,050 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 50,550 will die from that disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second-leading cause of cancer death by 2030. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with five-year relative survival rate at just 12%, whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and 88% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 900 deaths will occur here in South Carolina in 2023, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related deaths across the world, and whereas there were an estimated 495,773 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2020, and whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the Town of Lexington are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about the symptoms and risk of pancreatic cancer, and research into early detection causes ineffective treatments. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that November 16th, 2023 is hereby recognized as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Town of Lexington, and all citizens are urged to help increase awareness about the symptoms and risk of pancreatic cancer, and learn about research for early detection causes ineffective treatments. Dated the 6th day of November, 2022/3. Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Brad. Donovan, thank you for being with us. Appreciate you bringing that to us. If you have anything, yeah, let's get a picture with you real quick. Okay.
Thank you for making this official. I am with, I represent PanCAN, which is Pancreatic Cancer Network, and I represent South Carolina because I also lost my father to pancreatic cancer over 10 years ago, and it's not easy how it works and how fast someone can go. And I am doing my part to help spread awareness and share people's stories that have also had family members or loved ones go through this. So that is, our job is to spread the word and continue the research to get people the help they need. Thank you.
Donovan, thank you very much. Sorry for your loss, sir. Brad, thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call a halt right here. We've got something else that's not on the agenda.
Want to take a recess?
No. I just want you to sit there and look pretty.
It's not on the agenda, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I have approval. This first one is going to be for Ms. Kathy Manus. It's a proclamation from the council for the Town of Lexington, recognizing Kathy Manus for leadership and outstanding service to the community. Whereas Kathy Manus was elected to the Town Council for the Town of Lexington in 2004 and has served as a council member for the past 19 years, and whereas during her campaign and continuing to her service, she served as a listener to the people and proved her dedication to the slogan each day. And whereas during her first term in office, she came involved in a national lever as an advocate for local government, and whereas her understanding of state and federal rules as they apply to municipalities has become a platform for all leaders and citizens to address local issues in need of national support. Whereas her involvement in the National League of Cities includes service in several offices included president of women in municipal government, as well as a member of the Board of Directors, where she championed the idea that cities working together can be a stronger voice in accomplishing the needs for all cities. Whereas in 2020, Kathy was very honored to be elected as the president of National League of Cities, making her the first person from South Carolina to serve in this distinguished position, and the first Zoom president. Whereas Kathy remains dedicated to the Town of Lexington and has worked for responsible growth so the citizens and their families will be able to enjoy their hometown, and whereas as a result of her outstanding service, the Town of Lexington is today a better place to live, worship, and raise a family. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the council for the Town of Lexington that Kathy Manus is hereby recognized, congratulated, commended for outstanding service to the citizens of the Town of Lexington during her 19 years of service on the Lexington Town Council. Be it further proclaimed that she is hereby given thanks and well wishes for a successful future as she embarks upon all of her new endeavors. Dated the 6th day of November, 2023. Hazel Livingston, Mayor Pro temp.
service to the citizens of the Town of Lexington. The mayor and town council members and staff, thank you for your high standard of excellence and integrity. You are a people of great leadership and inspiration, and I suggest that you count on that.
Thank you.
She doesn't cook, but she can fix some crazy dishes. Thank you all. You have a little spare time to beat. I plan my vacation on the first and third Monday. Thank you. I have one now. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Would you like to share a few words?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the staff and to my council members and to the mayors that I've served with. It's It's truly been an honor, and I've enjoyed my 19 years. Lexington's a great place to live, and we have a fabulous staff. So thank you for making Lexington what it is. And to my council members, y'all keep fighting the hard fight and making Lexington the best in the state. Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you.
Look at you being all sneaky and...
Sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do. A proclamation from the council for the town of Lexington, recognizing Steve McDougal for leadership and outstanding service to the community. Whereas Steve McDoodle, Steve McDoodle, McDougal was raised in the town of Lexington and graduated from Lexington High School and the University of South Carolina. And whereas in November 2011, he was elected to the town council and served as a council member until he was elected mayor in December of 2013, and has served as mayor continuously since that time. And whereas he was re-elected in 2018 with a promise to the citizens to have responsible growth in the town of Lexington. And whereas he's worked tirelessly tirelessly with the town council and staff to implement a solid plan to improve traffic and methods to pay for it after federal funding was cut. And whereas Steve has been instrumental in downtown economic development, water quality issues, the town's vision plan, and bringing projects such as the Ice House Amphitheater and Lexington Paw Park to the town of Lexington. And whereas he has represented the town well as Chairman of the Central Midlands Council of Governments, past President of the South Carolina Association of Mayors, Chairman of the Lexington County Municipal Water and Sewer Commission, and was named to the Columbia Business Monthly's 50 Most Influential Hall of Fame. And whereas, as a result of his outstanding service, the town of Lexington is today a better place to live, worship, and raise a family. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the council for the town of Lexington that Steve McDougal is hereby recognized, congratulated, and commended for outstanding service to the citizens of the town of Lexington during his 12 years of service on the Lexington Town Council. Be it further proclaimed that he is hereby given thanks and well wishes for a successful future as he embarks upon all of his new endeavors dated the 6th day of November 2023. Hazel Livingston, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much.
It's a girl thing, Mayor. You didn't walk with her and tear up shoes.
That's true.
You get to take it home. Presenting to Steve McDougal, Mayor of Lexington, South Carolina, 2013 to 2023. And recognition of service in the state of Lexington. So that is your... Do that belong to you? This is actually... And that's what we did. Now you can go on. Now you can go on with your... Stay out of your way.
Thank y'all very much. That was, that was a surprise, and thank you. I appreciate it. Brad, Becky, Karen, that was a lot of proclamations tonight. Thank y'all. That was a lot of extra work, and I appreciate what y'all did putting those together for tonight's meeting. At this time, I'll move into the vision plan update. This is a vision plan update for November 2023. Virginia Hilton Park Construction and Renovation, the safety servicing on the playground of Virginia Hilton Park is now being installed. Work also continues on the walking trails throughout the entirety of the park. Once the project is completed, it will be more than twice the size it was before we started. The goal is to have it open sometime this spring. Old Mill Pond Trail, the construction I heard is now 50% complete. We anticipate, anticipate a late winter, early spring opening on that as well. The one-mile path will wrap around the pond and will be lit along the way. These projects are just part of the town's overall vision plan, and these are vital to a complete and sustainable community. These are certainly not vanity projects. These are very important to the town and how this town looks and feels for its residents. You can find a complete list of our projects online at lexsc.com. This time, we'll move into a traffic update from Mayor Protem, Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I say that, I was just gonna tell you, I know that there's been a lot of discussion on this park and throughout the campaign trail and stuff, and two weeks ago, I think, I took my two grandsons and they got to walk through, and we were looking at it and everything. And one of them, I kept when he was like three, four, five, and six, and we would go meet people there to discuss what was gonna happen. And he's now 10, and it was the coolest thing. He's going through the park, and all of a sudden, he stops and he turns around and looks at me. He said, "Nanny, I can finally see the vision." Because when we'd go through and I'd be meeting with somebody, I'd say, "You'll see the vision one day. You'll see the vision one day." And he remembered that, and he just stopped in his track. "I finally see the vision." I was like, "That's cool," because we met with a lot of people to get to that point. But anyway, here we go on traffic. There will be a lane closure this week at Mental Springs and Sunset Boulevard across from the New Habit Burger for curb work. This will take place Wednesday, November the 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Please use caution in this area. In the coming week, Dominion Energy will conduct a lane closure on Old Chapin Road at the Murphy's Gas Station entrance to finish the repair of a gas line. Work continues along Thompson Street off of West Main Street. Please continue to be aware of the construction when traveling. Fall street sweeping has begun in the town and will continue in the coming weeks. The next traffic committee meeting is scheduled for January the 10th, 2024, at 8:00 a.m. We encourage you to follow the town's social media pages for traffic alerts and updates, and please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway condition, or pothole that needs repair.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. This time, we'll move into public hearing. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance to adopt the updated standard business license rate class schedule, also known as the NICS Code, N-A-I-C-S Code. Anyone here wish to speak to that? That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. This is final reading of an ordinance to adopt the updated standard business license rate class schedule by NICS Code. Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The statewide Business License Standardization Act requires municipalities to adopt the updated standard rate classes in every odd year for implementation in the next even year business license cycle. I make a motion of an ordinance to adopt the updated standard business license rate class schedule by N-A-I-C-S Code.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Williams second. Some motion, any further discussion? Just to be clear, Stuart, Mr. Ford, this is something we do yearly?
Every other year.
Every other year. To keep us in compliance with the NICS Code.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you.
I will mention real quick...
Yes, sir.
...that businesses are gonna see very little impact. In fact, most will see a little bit of decrease that have an impact, and nobody that has an increase will be greater than 10% or $100.
Okay.
And the town's revenue is actually gonna go down slightly by about $11,000 as a result of this change. So thankfully, this update is in the favor of our businesses in large part.
Very good. That's great news. Anyone else have anything? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number two was pulled off of the agenda, so we'll move right into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map 5596-04-007 located at 300 Alliance Road. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gosemani Anna Baptist Church owns approximately 15.4 acres located at 300 Alliance Road and has petitioned to annex the property. The church is planning to expand on the property. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial. Meat Plant Road is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their October meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the parcel and local road classification for Meat Plant Road. I'll make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corrin second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map 4332-02-005 located in the 100 block of Smith Street. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Grant Brooker owns approximately .67 acres located in the 100 block of Smith Street and has petitioned to annex the property into the town. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and Smith Street is classified as an RL4 road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their October meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. Mr. Mayor, make a motion for first reading approval of the same.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corrin second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business? Why does that say? This is new business. It's from Councilmember Gavin Smith. First reading of an ordinance for a budget adjustment. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the October work session, Chief Green presented the need for a budget amendment to purchase Body Armor vests to replace vests that will be expiring in the current year. The vests were not approved from the Body Armor Assistance Grant and were not included in the budget for a total of $6,000. Staff has determined that the money is available in wages and benefits for the police department due to vacant positions during the first part of the fiscal year. In reviewing other departments, staff has also determined that other budget adjustments are needed. The air conditioner unit in the server room failed, and it cannot be repaired and must be replaced. Planning, building, and technology needs $14,000 to replace the unit. Interest income is coming in higher than anticipated, so increasing this appropriation would cover the cost of replacing that unit. The air conditioner unit in the parks building also failed. Again, that unit could not be repaired and had to be replaced. The parks department would like to move $7,000 from the repairs account to capital outlay. The utilities department is severely short-staffed and would like to contract with our repairs and maintenance vendor for the AMI systems to complete the installation of water meters to bring all town water meters on the AMI system. There are sufficient funds available in wages and benefits due to the vacancies that would cover this expenditure. Therefore, the following budget adjustment is requested. We would reduce police wages and benefits by $6,000, reduce utility wages and benefits by $72,000, reduce parks repairs and maintenance by $7,000, and add interest income for $14,000, which brings the total funding sources to $99,000. And the uses of that would be police for capital outlay, five vests of $6,000, planning, building, and technology capital outlay for the AC unit of $14,000, parks capital outlay for the AC unit of $7,000, and utilities for CIP AMI meter installations of $72,000, which brings the total uses to $99,000 and a net of $0. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Smith makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Williams second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Ford, we are transferring $72,000 and over to utilities for utility wages and benefits, but does that, does that taking into account workman's comp costs as well?
Yeah, that would be, so the cost of 72,000 will be the cost to install the meters.
Right.
And we have sufficient funds available, and so we're able to reduce that budget item by that amount and not impact any obligations that we have.
We'll also be saving on workman's comp because we won't be paying his hourly rate.
That's true.
So we save any more than that for the citizens.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protem, Hazel Livingston. This is ratification of the town administrator contract. Ms. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town council has appointed Rachel Moody as the new town administrator and is asked to approve the attached contract. I make a motion for ratification of employment contract for town administrator.
Ms. Livingston makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle second. Some motion, any further discussion? We'd just like to welcome Rachel to the team. She'll be here later this month, and look forward to her leadership. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would all like to wish a belated happy birthday to Councilmember Todd Lyle, who celebrated his birthday this past Thursday. Happy birthday, town.
Thank you.
Todd. Town hall will be closed this Friday, November the 10th, in observation of Veterans Day. Everyone really enjoyed the Veterans Day parade yesterday, and again, thank you to all of our veterans for your service to our country. Town council will meet on November the 20th at 6:00 in the council chambers for the council work session, and town hall will also be closed on November 23rd and 24th in observation of Thanksgiving. The Town of Lexington Snowball Festival kicks off on Thursday, November the 30th, at the Ice House Amphitheater Pavilion with a Christmas Craft Fair from 4:00 to 8:00. Events continue on December the 1st through December the 3rd. For a detailed list of events and times, please visit icehouseamphitheater.com. And lastly, tomorrow is Election Day for the town of Lexington, so please make sure you get out and vote. Thank you for tuning in for tonight's Town of Lexington Council meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Gavin. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Very good. Any questions from the news media tonight? They said no before I even asked. Thank you for being with us. Appreciate you being here. Thanks for what you do for our community and how you cover us. Appreciate it. Any public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Any questions from the public? Very good. That concludes our business...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Oh, Ms. Manus. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I forgot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and everyone here. First, I'd like to say happy birthday to Chief Green.
Bless your heart.
Hey, I know what that really means, Chief Green. But you really meant that one. As Gavin said, tomorrow is an election day, and I will be praying for everyone who's on the ballot for strength. It's a long day, and I just pray for everyone to have the strength to get through tomorrow. And thank you, my council members, for the resolution and the tray. And the next time Olivia and I sit and make cookies, I'll think about all of you, because yes, Hazel, I will put them on the tray. We have a wonderful town with an amazing staff. The parks improving our roads in our downtown, the Ice House Amphitheater, and I'm gonna tell you that parks and Ice House Amphitheater, they're awesome and a huge part of our town. I have loved serving on council. We have hard decisions to make every day, but everybody here wants to do the best for this great town. When I leave office on December the 3rd, I know that I'm leaving Lexington better than it was when I came. It's very important that our citizens pay attention to the candidates who are running to serve our council. Study the councils. Study the candidates. And do not check, just go in and check the boxes, especially the first two. We have some candidates who will continue to make Lexington a great place to live, work, worship, and go to school. But in my opinion, we have others running who will set Lexington back, and that can't happen. We have a candidate who described...
who are running to serve our council. Study the councils. Study the candidates. And do not check, just go in and check the boxes, especially the first two. We have some candidates who will continue to make Lexington a great place to live, work, worship, and go to school. But in my opinion, we have others running who will set Lexington back, and that can't happen. We have a candidate who describes who's a great talker. I mean, he does a good talk, but he describes himself as a California libertarian. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't think we want those ideas here in Lexington. We have another candidate running who spent over $70,000 on the town council race. And when I pulled the tax records on the houses he owns in the town of Lexington, they both said legal residents, no. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned, does he live in the town, or if he does, how long? I'm also concerned about a candidate who called COVID media-hyped and politicized. And I'm gonna tell you, COVID is not media-hyped and politicized. My son, my daughter-in-law, and my three-year-old grandchild has it right now. It is not media-hyped. It is not politicized. It is real, and it is real for our family right now. And when we passed the mask ordinance in the town of Lexington, and I will tell you, during COVID, that was the hardest time to govern as a member of town council. And I bet everybody up here agrees with me. That was hard. When we passed the mask ordinance, this family member, a family member of the candidate compared passing the mask ordinance to the death of George Floyd. And so that's why I ask everyone in the town of Lexington to study the candidates. We want Lexington to continue to be the best place in South Carolina to work, play, worship, and attend school. And the best way to do that is to elect good people with no hidden agenda who want to be a true public servant. So please go and vote tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Manus.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, we've already passed public comment.
Well, just for the constituents, which candidates are those that you're talking about, so they know not who not to vote for?
I'm sorry, we've passed public comment. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, November 6th, 2023. Recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. For the last time, without objection, we adjourn.